Good evening. On behalf of the Scottsbluff Gearing United Chamber of Commerce, welcome to this evening's candidate forum for the 2022 primary election. This candidate's forum features the individuals running for Scottsbluff City Council. This forum is one of several being presented by the Government Affairs Committee of the Scottsbluff Gearing United Chamber of Commerce. Along with my co-chair, Don Wolfe, my name is Bill Boyer, and we appreciate you joining us. We would like to thank the Rural Radio Scottsbluff staff for recording this forum so you can view it, as well as Scottsbluff Public Schools for hosting us this evening. As a reminder, there are nine candidates running for Scottsbluff City Council. In the May 10th primary election, you will be allowed to vote for up to three candidates. The top six vote-getters in the primary election will advance to the November general election. Before we meet the candidates, I would like to go over the format for this forum. Before we began recording, candidates randomly chose the order where they were seated and will be introduced. We will begin by asking a question, and each candidate will be given 90 seconds to respond. Then, there will be an optional 30-second rebuttal for each candidate following the answers. After the final question, each candidate will be allowed one minute for a closing statement. There are timers in the room, and each candidate will be informed and was informed of the format and the rules prior to tonight. None of the questions that I'll be asking tonight have been given to any of the candidates in advance. Now, let's meet the candidates at the forum tonight for the Scottsbluff City Council. First, Eugene Bott. Next, Jeanne McCarrigan. Next, Betsy Vidlac. Next, Chris Miller. Eric Ferguson. Nathan Green. Matthew Solomon. And finally, Kendall Palu. Selena Lerma was not able to attend tonight's forum. Per the rules, statements can be read for those candidates who are unable to attend. However, Selena was unable to submit a statement to be read tonight. So let's begin with our first question. We will start with Eugene. We'll start with an easy one tonight. Tell us about who you are and why you're running for Scottsbluff City Council.
My name is Eugene Bott. I've lived in the valley for 55 years. I've owned a business for the last 30 years here in Scottsbluff. I'm running, I guess, to create a vibrant and growing Scottsbluff. I want to see our resources utilized, including our senior citizens. I represent the voice of both the businessman and the senior citizens of Scottsbluff to the council and all the important work that they have to do.
All right. Jeanne?
Okay. My name is Jeanne McCarrigan. I was born and raised here in Scottsbluff. I attended the Scottsbluff schools. I have served four years on city council. This is my fourth year. And I currently serve as the mayor of Scottsbluff. And I chose to run again. I just really enjoy giving back to my community and primarily just focused on a great place for my kids to live as they grow older and continue down the path of having a job and a home and a place here to live, so.
All right. Betsy?
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity for us to come together and share a little bit about ourselves and why we want to run for city council. My name is Betsy Vidlac. I was born and raised in Scottsbluff as well. I graduated from Scottsbluff High School, attended WNCC, and just this past May, I graduated with my master's in business administration. I have four children, a couple that live out on their own already and two at home with me still. So I think that I have experience because I've worked on various boards in the community and civic groups. And I'm really excited to run for city council because I really believe in having an equitable, safe, and thriving community in Scottsbluff. Those are important to me, and I believe that everyone should have access to that in all of our neighborhoods. I believe that it's important that people feel safe and that my children feel safe and they can play in their yard. That's important to me. And I also think that we need to always be looking to innovate and be creative in our community, and we need to be thriving so that young people want to come back here and our elderly want to stay here. So again, I'm interested in learning more about the city council. I'm excited to be here tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Hi. My name is Chris Miller. I have lived in Scottsbluff for 30 years, lifelong residence in the valley. I am involved in other civic organizations within the community and decided that this is another opportunity for me to give back to our community. I'm really interested in seeing the community grow, both economically, environmentally, and all of those things. I want this to be a place, too, that after my kids go off to college, they want to come back and raise their families here, and that's something I strive for. So it's important to me. I love the diversity that we have in our community. We have so many different groups, and I want to service all citizens of Scottsbluff, just not particular special interest groups. I don't have a hidden agenda. I don't own my own business. I actually work for a bank in Michigan. So I just want to give back to the community and add value. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric?
Hello. My name is Eric Ferguson. I would love to be your representative in the city council. I was born and raised in Scottsbluff. My ancestors were the earliest settlers arriving here in 1886. My parents had a farm near Lake Minotere, and I'm a 1978 graduate of Scottsbluff High School. I served in the military from '78 to '89, to include two overseas tours. My education includes the University of Nebraska and a bachelor of science degree in business from the University of Maryland. Professionally, I work as an IT project manager for Social Security Administration assigned to the Baltimore headquarters and set to retire in September. I always volunteered in the churches I attend, once a secretary and also a commander in a program called Royal Rangers, which is like the Boy Scouts. I joined the Coast Guard Auxiliary and was a public affairs officer, a marine safety officer. I was a post commander of veterans group and sponsored help for veterans, free meals, parades, and the welcome home ceremonies to Vietnam vets. My awards, aside from my military decorations, include citations from the Social Security. I'm a recipient of the President's Volunteer Service Award. I have a passion to help others, to serve others, to improve lives. I will be a voice for the Scottsbluff citizens. You can visit my website at billferguson.com.
Thank you. Nathan?
My name is Nathan Green. I've been a council member for four years. I am not a Scottsbluff native. I'm in Port, I guess. I moved here for the community with the goal of raising my children and having a hometown, not just a small-town feel. I feel that while on council, we've had some pretty good-sized challenges with COVID, new management, and going through the process of learning how to go about those. One of the main things that I do see is you have to have an empathy with the citizens because their problems may be a common problem, but it's not common to them. So being able to hear them out, address their concerns, and give them a way to feel heard is something that is important. I work with the youth in the scouting, different travel sports and league sports with my kids. I have three kids in elementary school and the junior high. So we enjoy going to the different sporting events and games here in the community. And just really looking forward to moving forward for the youth, like you said, having something here for them when we're gone.
Thank you. Matthew?
Hi. Matt Solomon, and I'm a lifelong resident here from Scottsbluff. I attended high school here at Scottsbluff, too. Went to college, back east, and then after college, decided to come back here just because I think the quality of life is good here. I think the city of Scottsbluff has a lot to offer when compared to other places you could live in Western Nebraska. We've got some strengths. We have a paid fire department. We have a strong volunteer fire department. Our police department's a good core group. I've used them at the high school where I teach for speeches. When I first got out of college, I tried to give back to the city by writing grants. When you first get out, it used to be hard to get jobs teaching. So when I had no sub-jobs, I would write grants for the pathway project. And I did that for a while. I taught government for over 20 years, and I basically want to give back to the city some more. And since I don't have the financial resources to do a lot of philanthropy, I'd like to give back through my time in helping with the city council if the voters see fit. My kids are getting to that stage. They're about to either go into college or come back from college. And I want them to come back here, and so I kind of have a vested interest that Scottsbluff stays strong so they come back home.
Thank you. Kendall?
Good day, all. My name's Kendall Palu. I am a Scottsbluff resident now for two years. 2019, I moved here in August of 2019 and didn't leave after the dual hailstorm totaled out my car. But I was born and raised in North Platte. Moved to California to go to school, found out I could play golf year-round in California, so I stayed there. Two years ago, was offered the position here at Scottsbluff Country Club, and it's my dream job. My past includes being a professional, golf professional, at Pebble Beach Resorts and Carmel Valley Ranch, and then most recently, in the desert of Southern California. The position came up here, and it's kind of been my dream job. I love it in Scottsbluff and want to make Scottsbluff better tomorrow than it is today. And I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
This time, we have 30 seconds for rebuttal. I don't know if any rebuttling needs to be done on introductions, but if any of you so desire an extra 30 seconds, we have that for you. Doc, we will move on to our second question. This one, we will start with Jeanne. Jeanne, it's a two-part question. What do you feel the biggest issue facing the city is, and how would you work to improve it?
Well, you know, right now, we have some issues that are related primarily to the workforce, which I know the Scottsbluff schools has worked very well with the businesses here locally to help with the Career Academy and growing our workforce in that area and industries. We also have a housing shortage along with that. And so we've kind of looked at different avenues, and I'm thinking that we're going to have to probably reach out to investors, maybe that are outside of the local area, to come in and help with the housing issue. We just were working closely with Gearing. They have proposed a land bank, which would take some dilapidated properties out and remove them and then have empty lots, but we still need funds to build the new. We do have LB 357 coming up in November, and that is an increase in our sales tax. So that will be an issue for the voters to decide on as well. And so right now, I don't have the answers to all those questions, but I am working on them as the mayor actively, so.
Betsy, what do you feel the biggest issue facing the city is, and how would you work to improve it?
I think one of the biggest issues right now is having that city manager and getting a city manager in place, right? So that's obviously a very crucial position with the city, and it leads the employees and is that liaison to the council. So I think that's very important, and I think that's something that they're working on and may be, you know, in place by the time the council change is over. But I think that person, the right candidate for that, is someone who really has some high integrity and is really somebody who can listen and has good communication skills and works really well with those city employees. And then additionally, I think, like Jeanne said, workforce issues and housing. That's a huge issue. We know that a lot of us are struggling to fill positions in our organizations, and so we need to always be creative in looking at how we can improve that. The Career Academies at the high school, great opportunity to do that. And I think that's giving young people an opportunity to look at things besides just college, but trades and arts and things like that. So as Jeanne said as well, the housing issue. When you're bringing in workforce, we are struggling to find places for them to live, and that's at all income levels. So affordable housing, safe housing, and workforce housing. So those are both issues. I think we have to be creative in how we solve that and definitely work in partnership, so.
Chris, what do you feel is the biggest issue facing the city, and how would you work at improving it?
Well, one of the biggest issues, just like Betsy said, was hiring the city manager. A city manager that can give this community what we expect, not one that we're going to have here for a year or so. So vetting that candidate is very important and making sure they are the right fit and getting that position filled. I do know that we have the interim city managers who are obviously doing a great job right now. But I do think that is an important issue and an important thing that needs to be resolved. And I would assume that that would be handled quickly and probably before the next council comes as well, just like Betsy said. Again, workforce, I think that that is always important, along with having those jobs that people can do and want to come back to our community, the businesses, the industries, trying to bring some of that back, too, is important and to keep building our community recreationally. I think that there are opportunities to improve our city in a recreational manner. I know we've got the swimming pool, the aquatic center, which is huge. I think that is a huge benefit for the youth. And, you know, with 23 Club revitalizing that, that's been huge. And those are the type of things that I would like to see continue in our community just to continue searching those avenues to provide our youth. Thank you.
Eric, what do you feel is the biggest issue facing the city, and how would you work to improve it?
I think the biggest problem that we're going to face, and this is like an external thing, but I think housing inflation is going to be a big problem in the future. It's going to jump prices up so much that it's going to be everything, including housing and so on, is going to be quite unaffordable for a lot of people in this area. Most people in this area don't make a lot of big wages here. So I also think that we need to get a city manager in here and start running things. And we also need to finish police force recruits. Need to get that up. And also, very important item here, I think we need to take care of the landfill and get us a real dump somewhere. Thank you.
Nathan, what do you feel the biggest issue facing the city is, and how would you work to improve it?
Well, I think everybody's touched on the city manager aspect. That's something that needed, needs to be done, get it advertised and start vetting. I have a feeling that will be put off till after the election. I don't think that that's going to happen before the new council is seated. I hope that it would, and I wish that it would. I think the issues that the next council is going to have to address or is going to be challenges are the different infrastructures, travel and tourism, the landfill, water. So the way that I would address that is, you know, continue with inter-local agreements for the dump. Keep that moving forward, make sure that we're on top of it, that it doesn't get bypassed or we forget portions of it. Working on good contracts that are solid for the community. As far as the water, the PAWS program, get that back up and running. And then also support the rail, airports, and different highway for bringing supplies to their community as well as visitors, too.
Thank you. Matt, what do you feel the biggest issue facing the city is, and how would you work to improve it?
I think one of the bigger issues that ebbs and flows with the economy is funding. The city, a lot of the funding, you know, is driven by sales tax. And right now, things are well, but I can see that ebbing and flowing. It's not constant, depending on the economy and how things are going locally. But I think, you know, key to that would be the city manager position, having a good background in finances, especially in grants, both knowing how to get state aid, federal aid, and the correct paperwork and steps to proceed with that. I think the other solution, too, is partnerships. Working with Gearing and other cities on the landfill is a good option and probably a more realistic one than Scottsbluff tackling that themselves. And maybe pushing forward with highway funding also to improve things such as Highway 26. I know there's a lot of wrecks every year. There's 700 in a year in Scottsbluff, but the worst ones, of course, are on Highway 26 because of speed. And maybe getting some federal funding for that. And then last would be just making sure we maintain funding to maintain the quality of life with all the services that we have here in Scottsbluff. So we maintain the families we have here, and we keep continuing to draw retirees off from the front range, which will help our economic situation.
Thank you. Kendall, what do you feel the biggest issue facing the city is, and how would you work to improve it?
Actually, nothing new here that hasn't already been said. The biggest thing for me as far as the city goes would be the city manager position. I want to thank Mayor McCarrigan and Councilman Green for sharing the news with that that's going to be waiting until after the new council comes in. But I think that's very important. You know, he's the leader of the city, and we really need somebody here that can lead. But really with that, it takes, it's kind of twofold. It's a collaboration with council and then also with the residents of the city. Currently, we have our chief of police who's filling in and Liz from the office, which, for me personally, that's kind of an issue. But I'm willing to wait until after the election to get a city manager in here. I feel, you know, the safety is very important, and the chief has better things to do than what the city manager should be doing. Other than that, you know, things that stand out for me are tourism. Tourism is huge for our area. I know I'm at a private club, but we benefit from tourism, and I think we need to focus on positives for the city. One last thing is the project currently going on on 18th Street in East Overland.
Thank you. We've reached our time. Eugene, what do you feel the biggest issue facing the city is, and how would you work to improve it?
Mentioned our, I'm sorry. I think that the things that have been mentioned are very critical, but I also think one of the things that hasn't been mentioned was senior housing, affordable senior housing. As our people grow older, and I saw him, they tend to look at downsizing. We need to, and in the process of downsizing, they create other homes and that can be available to their general public. We need to create a healthcare environment here that will bring and attract doctors and nurses that want to stay here as permanent residents. We, of course, city manager is a definite situation that we need to do. We also need to look at bringing in some additional outside industries that are new and innovative to our area.
Thank you, Eugene. We'll start with Jeanne. Go down the line. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to add with an additional 30 seconds?
I would just like to add that we, you know, we haven't finalized the decision to not hire a city manager before the election, but I was involved in the process previously, and that's a, you know, that's a big job. And you kind of, we kind of set him up for failure because we hired him and then we had three new council members come in. And so it's very important that those that are determined that possibly could be in that position are included as well, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, we'll start with our next question. Kendall, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I had 30 seconds. One last thing that I wanted to point out was the fact that, you know, strategic plan, Eugene has spoken about senior housing, but I think we need to find more housing for all.
Okay, let's move on to our next question. We'll begin with you, Betsy. Everybody up here spoke about the city manager, so let's talk about the city manager a bit more. As the city looks for a new city manager, what leadership qualities do you think are imperative to set Scottsbluff up for success, not only tomorrow, but for years to come?
So I do think the city manager is a very crucial position, like I said before, as they are the leader of the city. I think that the right person will have high integrity, good communication skills, good listening skills, transparency, as they are the representative. It should be someone that sees those employees as valuable team players and values their input. We have some very long-term, great employees within the city, and it needs to be someone who can really focus on operating the city efficiently and effectively. So it would be my hope that we could find somebody internally or even locally who would be interested in stepping up to that. At the same time, if that's not, no one is interested in that, I think it is something that we will need to search for and the right candidate who really meets the needs of our community, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, as the city looks for a new city manager, what leadership qualities are imperative to set Scottsbluff up for success, not only tomorrow, but for years to come?
So just like Betsy hit on, I think integrity is key. I think carrying yourself with integrity, honesty, and communication skills are obviously a must. I believe that it has to be somebody who knows what they're getting into, understands our community first, gets out there and tries to understand the constituents in our city, and doesn't come in and try to make wholesale changes right off the bat. I think it's important, anytime you take over anything, you know what you're getting into. And, you know, we have a very diverse community, and I would hope that that individual would see our diversity and see the equity we have in our community. Also, somebody who is fiscally sound and is looking for those ways to be efficient and cost savings and things along those lines. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, as the city looks for a new city manager, what leadership qualities are imperative to set Scottsbluff up for success tomorrow and for years to come?
Well, the city manager position is a very important position. It's like him being the CEO of the city. And he's going to have to get along with the mayor and the council people as long as, as well as with the employees of the city. And there's a lot of tasks to be involved in that position. So it's going to be, have to take a hard-working person to do that with a lot of good communication skills as well. So I'm hoping that we can get one soon, and good luck for the council to find the right person.
Nathan, as the city looks for a new city manager, what leadership qualities are imperative to set Scottsbluff up for success, not only tomorrow, but for years to come?
I think it's a good vetting process. Going through this once before, I think we placed a little too much emphasis on the scouting or recruitment organization to do the due diligence, and we're happy to get some applicants, especially as the extensions with Rick Kukon kept moving further and further down the road. So I think we did the best with what we had. But anybody in the position to help vet this position really needs to look at it as the best for the community. City managers should have a vision of the future. Should have a strong personal drive, dealing with the community and staff for high values, but also listening to the overall direction of the council. We are a council that changes our mind every election, it seems. So having a forethought and a direction and being able to follow that, but yet incorporate the current council's ideals. And they got to be excited about the community. And they got to be excited about the community, got to get out there and promote themselves almost as much as the community.
Thank you. Matt, as the city looks for a new city manager, what leadership qualities are imperative to set Scotts Bluff up for success, not only tomorrow, but for years to come?
With the city manager, of course, we want someone that's well qualified, but also seek someone that has good people skills. And I guess for me personally, it'd be someone I'd like to have as my own boss, if, you know, they were a boss at where I work at. And there's qualities we've all seen good and bad with bosses we've had through employment. And I would ask the current department head leaders what they've seen good with all the city managers they've had in the past and focus on those qualities when we do the hiring process. And with the city manager, I'd hope we'd get someone that has a commitment to the city, would be comfortable living here. It's not a Denver, it's not Omaha, but I think there's a lot of potential here and someone that's okay with working with the resources we have and creative enough to get projects done.
Thank you. Kendall, as the city looks to hire a new city manager, what leadership qualities are imperative to set Scotts Bluff up for success, not only tomorrow, but for years to come?
Obviously integrity, transparency and communication, we all hear that every day. The biggest thing for me, it needs to be a local applicant who is able to listen, but not only listen, but collaborate with the city council.
Thank you. Eugene, as the city looks for a new city manager, what leadership qualities are imperative to set Scotts Bluff up for success, not only tomorrow, but for years to come?
Well, I think we definitely need to vet the person. He needs to have a history of success in management, again, good communication skills, good people skills and a commitment to the community. So we need to find somebody that is, maybe has a history of staying where they've been for a number of years, along with possibly even a smaller city to start with, but not much smaller than we are, you know. So it's, he's got the experience too.
Thank you. And Jeannie, as the city looks for a new city manager, what leadership qualities are imperative to set Scotts Bluff up for success, not only tomorrow, but for years to come?
You know, being in that process previously, I definitely feel they need to have the experience. You know, even if it's with a smaller city, at least have that experience. They need to be a team player and they need to be open-minded. There's a diverse group of employees as well as community members that they have interaction with on a daily basis, as well as a council that's, you know, sitting there making demands upon them. And so they need to be able to juggle all of that. They also need to be someone that can follow through on projects that unfortunately, the government moves at a slow pace. So a lot of these projects take time and so they need to be in it to the end. And, you know, I think that who we have in place right now is doing a great job. They're very familiar with the employees and they're very familiar with the community. And so I would like to say thank you to them tonight. But it definitely needs to be a process that's taken a slow process and we need to do our due diligence.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything they would like to add with an additional 30 seconds, Nathan?
I would just like to add that the council or the body that helps find the new city manager also educates themselves on what that position they're hiring for is all about. There were some things that I learned after the whole process was done, where I thought, hey, this isn't my idea, the best person. Finding out different roles that the position required was not always the best to get those answers from and not just expecting them to know what it was.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our next question and Chris, we will start with you on this one. How does the city solve the issue of aging and failing water and wastewater infrastructure?
Those are very good questions and something I'm not very familiar with. You know, I don't know how that works, so I really don't have an answer to that. But I do know that I'm very solution-driven and obviously I'm very open-minded. And those are the things that I would expect to learn as I would be elected and be able to solve those issues with the rest of the council. But at this point, no, I do not know how that works.
Thank you. Eric, how does the city solve the issue of aging and failing water and wastewater infrastructure?
Well, I myself get a lot of hard water where I am and I personally had to replace my sewer line in my house. My house is 1950. And I think what you're just going to have to do is replace the lines like one by, I should say, first come, first served, I guess, and oldest. But that'll be a big project that will be and a lot of torn up streets and things, so. But it has to be done, that's what's going to have to be done.
Nathan, how does the city solve the issue of aging and failing water and wastewater infrastructure?
I like the phrasing there, solve the issue. It's always, once you fix it, it becomes aged as soon as you get it in the ground. The idea is to be proactive, not reactive. That's the questions about infrastructure or water treatment plants. And then we've kind of been surprised by some failures of the system. So trying to get ahead of it, rely on the staff to let us know, set a timeframe of, here's how long it's been since we've done this. This area is probably an area of concern. And then budgeting for those different things, looking into different grants or government programs that might be coming for infrastructure or sewer and water. The POS program is something that I'm passionate about to get water supply to the whole valley. And that's not needed yet, but it will be in the future. We can discuss the trash later.
Thanks, Matt. How does the city solve the issue of aging and failing water and wastewater infrastructure?
I think across the nation, that's a problem a lot of cities are facing. It's kind of the refrigerator syndrome where you don't see it until it's already a problem. So what you don't see, you don't realize is there. And I know I haven't worked with the water department with problems I've had in my old neighborhoods. A lot of those lines you don't detect until you lose water pressure. And I guess according to them, there's always a percentage that we're always losing. But I think you're going to have to lean heavily on your department head for the water department. They've got the expertise and they can help kind of set up a schedule. I agree with kind of going with the age of the lines and working from the oldest to the newest and getting those lines replaced. And then a lot of that too is going to lean heavily on whoever the new city manager is, making sure that we can also get assistance for these repairs with state and federal aid because these are going to be very costly repairs.
Thank you. Kendall, how does the city solve the issue of aging and failing water and wastewater infrastructure?
Again, I think it starts with the city manager, someone who can come in and assess the issues and provide a solution and an opinion. But I also think that the head of the water department, his opinion is valuable and we need to look at other areas and how they've been able to solve it.
Eugene, how does the city solve the issue of aging and failing water and wastewater infrastructure?
I consider, I guess, an area that I had not given much thought to or had much knowledge of. Although I do believe that one of the things we would need to do is look for any current and new innovations that have, might help solve the problem or make it more use, repair as the repairs are done, that they last longer and go with less maintenance and so forth. But again, it's something I'd be, would want to do a lot of research on before I made a decision.
Thank you. Jeannie, what does the city do to solve the issue of aging and failing waste, water and wastewater infrastructure?
It comes down to funding. I know that they're aware that there are areas within the city that has issues already. And it's one of those areas that we can't, we would have to use like LB 357 or some other type of process to get the additional funding to do a large project like that. So we rely on budgeting and we just recently had some issues at the wastewater plant that we had to use a lot of our funds for that we had budgeted. And so if we can find grant funds like from the federal level or the state level to help with that, that would be great. But I do know that they plan to do certain sections, they budget for those each year. And so that's the plan, but if something else comes up that's a priority, that goes ahead of it, so.
Betsy, how does the city solve the issue of aging and failing water and wastewater infrastructure?
I agree with Jeannie. I think that if we don't invest in these areas and we don't allocate funds and budget for that, then it's going to fall off that priority list. And as many others said, I think that really researching this and utilizing the expertise within our city would be the most important piece here.
Great. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add with an additional 30 seconds? Nathan?
I think that we are looking for the city manager to be the savior in this. I think we need to look back on our staff, we've got an amazing staff. We give them the tools to do their job and they do a good job. We've added the camera trucks and different mapping techniques to keep an eye on these and help put together a plan. I think by having a senior, a city planner that looks to the future, sees the growth and the potential needs and then also see as the city grows away from other areas, if that's still needed so much. So just getting ahead of the issues before total failure.
Great. Anyone else? Matt?
I just had one last one and that would be, of course, we got to fix what's already been built. But also just making sure building codes are set for new construction so that we have good adequate lines that are going to last for a long time so that we've got a gap between the repairs we have to do.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on, go to Eric with the next question, we'll go from underground to above ground. Housing was tight coming into 2020 and probably more so now and more expensive. So what ideas do you have for improving availability and affordability of workforce housing in the area?
Well, I personally had a problem finding a house just a year ago. And I can only find one house available. And it's a workable house, but that's going to be an issue. I had my neighbor personally was going to sell his house and build a house, but he decided not to because the lumber prices are so high. And if you, for me to build a shed, it cost me about twice as much as what it did like about three years ago when I did that job. So it's going to be a difficult solution, really. You can maybe try to refurbish some older houses and, but we're going to, like I said, we're going to probably go through an inflation period. And I know that the other areas in the country, the housing, they also have housing crunches. And so that's just something that I'll put on my website, I guess, and think about it and put it on my website. The boat Ferguson dot com.
Nathan, what ideas do you have for improving availability and affordability of workforce housing in the area?
I think just availability is one thing, working with developers, trying to stimulate building growth, maybe different size housing, multifamily, different campus designs, maybe not going as far as trailer parks, but looking at all varieties of housing that could be brought in quickly, but yet efficiently and appropriately. I think working with Twin City Development and their grant writing for housing is still an important factor. Working with the schools, making sure that there's nothing that's left aside as far as like encouraging families, younger families, the older families and aging houses, making sure that they still are able to upkeep their house and properties so that they are marketable for other people to buy when they do decide to sell.
Thank you. Matt, what ideas do you have for improving availability and affordability of workforce housing in the area?
The housing situation, I've realized probably in the last 15 years has gotten difficult around here. Now I'm lucky because I'm in a house right now, but the costs have exploded in the last year and that's nationwide. So some of those solutions maybe go beyond the scope of what the city council can control. So some of it, we're going to have to allow the market to correct. The prices went way up in the last year for a variety of reasons. Inflation rates are real high right now. There are steps maybe we could take with trying to find grants and those types of issues to get some housing constructed. But as was mentioned earlier, our biggest obstacle is all the construction materials have skyrocketed. So there really is no easy solution to this. I try and help park rangers find apartments when they come and work in the summer. I work out the monument and it's a horrible time finding affordable apartments. But probably the easiest and quickest solution would just be trying to find quick and affordable apartment complexes that we can build. And then the housing, you know, we'll have to work around that later because that's probably the most expensive option right now.
Thank you. Kendall, what ideas do you have for improving availability and affordability of workforce housing in the area?
I think it's an attraction of investors, either investors here or locally or outside the area. And then also the attraction to builders and contractors, whether it be tax breaks or whatnot. And then short term would be refurbishing of current houses here in the local area. And then also I would say the collaboration with the local TCD and also Starleal, who's the development leader.
Thank you. Eugene, what ideas do you have for improving availability and affordability of workforce housing in the area?
Well, again, I think that, excuse me, it's good, it does take a group of options, including, you know, working with developers and construction people. Where it's going to have to be, look at various types of housing. Can we refurbish what we have and create, but you know, by refurbishing them and getting them back on the tax rolls, will it help to generate additional income to basically offset the costs of any stimulation or any kind of incentives we might give to builders or developers?
Jeannie, what ideas do you have for improving availability and affordability of workforce housing in the area?
I think we need to incentivize the investors and the contractors to build here. I know that TCD is working on that. They have, there's funding that's been put in by the different cities where contractors can come in and get, it's like a line of credit and availability for them to go and build homes. And so I think we need to work in that area as well. Possibly work with some of the large businesses and help incentivize them, especially if they're bringing in professionals to maybe look at investing in some housing. That's been done in different cities and they've actually put funding into that. And they have an ownership percentage then in that housing as well. So I think it just comes down to funding and incentivizing. And as a former banker, I know that anytime they, banks lend on those, they want them pre-sold. So we got to do something to bring them in and have them. So we gotta do something to bring them in and have them put that money into it, so.
Thank you. Betsy, what ideas do you have for improving availability and affordability of workforce housing in the area?
So I think there was a study done by PADD in 2016 on affordable housing in the Panhandle. And it just identified issues in all the different areas of housing, all the different income levels. And this isn't a new issue, so it's definitely getting worse, but it's something that we've been dealing with for a long time. I think partnerships with businesses, like Jeannie said, that's definitely an option. I think something we should look at and be innovative. What kind of ways can we create social enterprises or work with existing organizations? There are organizations who have funds to pay rent or to help individuals that need housing that cannot spend those funds because we don't have the housing to pay for. So I think incentivizing the landlords and builders, like they said, I think there's a lot of ways we could look at that and how much the city is involved in that. You know, I think there's a piece, but there's also a piece for our businesses and our other organizations out there as well.
Thank you. Chris, what ideas do you have for improving availability and affordability of workforce housing in the area?
I agree with what a lot of the candidates are saying is incentivizing some of these developers, investors to come into town and build apartment complexes, smaller houses. The market will take care of itself. It always does. It's cyclical. Interest rates are going back up. So, you know, people are not, that affects also, you know, what people can sell their houses at. But we have gotten at an all-time high across the nation as far as what housing costs. And that isn't only buying a house, that's renting. So we need to also look at ways that we can help those that cannot afford, so our senior citizens. Are there programs we can get going? Are there grants that we can apply for some federal funding to help those senior citizens? But we need to build those retirement homes. We need to build affordable housing. And that all comes from trying to find investors, just like everybody else has said on the panel.
Thank you. Anyone have something they'd like to add? An additional thirty seconds? Okay, seeing that, we'll move on to our next question. Nathan, we'll start with you. Riverside Discovery Center is likely to reach out to the city for changes in financial support during your tenure if reelected in your case. What, if any, is the proper level of such support and why?
Having a dollar amount in my head to say out loud and say, here's what I think it's worth, I think is unfair to the zoo and the city. I think the zoo has grown in responsibility, seen more membership and patrons come through. So I would like to see how that plays out, maybe some different contracts to renegotiate where that is or find out what the actual, not to use minimum requirement, but what can be done to continue their path and their growth, but also make sure that we're doing it the right way so they're not becoming so dependent on us that they can't do it if we have to reduce, if we have a downturn in the economy. So working together and finding a good balance, I think is very important.
Thanks. Matt, if elected, what, if any, is the proper level of support for Riverside Discovery Center and why?
We've utilized the zoo for my own family for years, so I have a lot of respect for it. I think Anthony Mason has done a knockout job getting the zoo turned around and back on track. I think it's a great resource for families who struggle with funds. I know when we were low on income per month, at the end of the month, the zoo was a perfect thing with our family membership. We would always take our kids there. I think they're making a good effort at turning things around, improving the exhibits. They've added the bears and the new enclosure. They've added the new pumas. And they're gonna improve more enclosures. And they've been really good about being creative, about working in private donors and with their own money and some aid from the city. And so I think rather than reduce any money, I'd be in favor of actually restoring the $50,000 that they lost, you know, in this last year and keep them on the right track. Because for me at least, it's a quality of life issue, offering that to families.
Thank you. Kendall, if elected, what, if any, is the proper level of support for Riverside Discovery Center and why?
It's a great question, Bill. Actually, the zoo is great. I've been there a few times myself. As far as support from the city, I would have to look at their financials and then also get a recommendation as far as from the city manager and look at the budget and what the city can afford.
Eugene, if elected, what, if any, is the proper level of support for Riverside Discovery Center and why?
Well, as a very strong supporter and working with the zoo for the last few years and being the sole supporter or sole sponsor of the Free Day at the Zoo, in which there was over 3,700 people brought in on one day, I believe that it is a valuable resource that needs to be adequately funded or actually even increased a little bit. We have a number of other projects that we have presented as options for increasing revenues there, one of which is, that we've discussed, is the miniature golf course there along with other things that might attract a younger, more of our youth rather than just younger children. Also, the, we do, I do a lot of the marketing for them on providing all the signs and banners and so forth. And so then there's always something going on. We do flyers and advertising at all the schools for any major events and so forth. So I believe that the zoo is a very, very valuable resource that we need to keep funded.
Thank you. Jeannie, if reelected, what, if any, is the proper level of support for Riverside Discovery Center and why?
You know, I was involved in the last process. And what we do is we take a look at their financial condition and make a determination based off of that. I don't think that the zoo will ever be self-sustaining. I mean, it's just not going to be. But Anthony has done a great job. He's increased it. He's been doing outreach into other states and he's added programs. And I think he's worked really hard to make it what it is today. And, you know, I just think that we're gonna have to budget to always provide some type of support, but that'll be determined based off of what their needs are at that time.
Thank you. Betsy, if elected, what, if any, is the proper level of support for Riverside Discovery Center and why?
I think the zoo is very important in our community. It's tourism, it's an attraction. They create internship opportunities for young people. I know I took my children there often and have memories of them and pictures of them. And so how do you put a value on that experience, really? I do think that, just like any entity, they have to always work to kind of diversify their funding and continue to look for grants and sponsorships. And I do think the city is also a piece of that puzzle. I know they have a very creative board that works very hard to give lots of different ideas and opportunities to keep them funded diversely. So I don't know what that amount is, but I do think it's important that the city is a part of that.
Thank you. Chris, if elected, what, if any, is the proper level of support for Riverside Discovery Center and why?
So just as everyone has said, I don't think at this point you can put a dollar amount on it without knowing the financials and doing the research. And just like everyone else has said, that I believe that that is an important part of our community. I think it, not only for residents of this valley, but traveling tourism, and that's something that we're trying to grow. We need to continue to invest in our zoo. And the level of support would depend on what the needs are at the time. And, you know, then the council would make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, if elected, what, if any, is the proper level of support for Riverside Discovery Center and why?
Well, I support the Riverside Zoo a whole lot, and that means a lot to this community. It's been around for a long time. And I think bringing seniors down there, it would be joyful for them, as I did with my mother. And not just the kids. I think maybe we can add like carnival rides or something like that to kind of add to it. But I think adding exhibits would mean a lot and attract more. I noticed that the last report that I know is there's a lot more out-of-staters that came in to visit it. But I will try to help as much as I can and help fundraise it when I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with anything to add on that? Eugene?
Just a side note, my grandson from California actually interned at the zoo this last year along with a number of other people from out of state. So it is a organization that has some fairly wide range appeal for people.
Anyone else? All right. Matt, we'll move down to you. We'll move on to another project, and that's the Proposed Aquatic Center. Obviously, it's gonna be something that's decided on by the voters and ultimately not up to the city council. But do you feel the aquatic center is something that can be successful in our area? And if so, how?
I think it can be successful. I think it's another important quality of life addition to the city for all age groups. I know specifically the swim team has been desperate trying to find a home because the splash arena, the amount of changes they'd have to do for renovations, it'd be so costly. And so now I think they're just using the YMCA. But I think it goes beyond just the swim team. I think it's a good form of therapy for those who are older or need physical therapy. And just having another indoor facility for people to utilize during the winter is always a bonus because I know in the winter, a lot of people get cabin fever. And whenever we can have some option for families to get out and utilize an indoor facility, I'm all for it.
Thank you. Kendall, is the aquatic center something that can be successful in our area? And if so, how?
I believe it can be successful. One thing is the, it attracts all ages. It's kind of like golf, attracts all ages. And then with it being year-round, being able to use it, giving kids a place to go, something to do, something fun, and then also attract those for therapy and whatnot.
Eugene, is the aquatic center something that can be successful in our area? And if so, how?
Yes, I think it can be and it is, along with, particularly if we can put together a coalition of like the school system and the YMCA, along with the city of Scotts Bluff, to help with the maintenance and funding, staffing of the pool, the aquatic center. I also think that it needs to, all the sites need to be thoroughly examined to make sure that it is the best location for the project.
Jeannie, is the aquatic center something that can be successful in our area and how?
I believe it can be successful, but that success is gonna be based off of who the partners are in this. The city on its own cannot run the aquatic center. It cannot fund the aquatic center. So we're going to have to build that partnership and have those right partners at the table. It's also gonna depend on the size of the facility. And that's why we're getting the community involved and having them make the decision on whether or not they want, you know, to fund that with the half percent. And so we just need to look at that partnership because we don't want to be in a position where we're back, you know, with the splash. And we have a facility that no one is able to maintain and operate at that point, so.
Thank you. Betsy, is the aquatic center something that can be successful in our area and how?
So this is definitely a topic I'm interested in learning more about. I do think it can be successful. I think having those safe places for children and families and our elderly to go and be active and enjoy themselves are so important. I think pools are just something that it's great to have in the community. I have memories of going to the pool as a young person. And I think it is important that we do create that in partnership, as many folks have mentioned, and the schools as well. So the schools need that place for young people to be able to practice and have their swim team. Many of the pools in our community are aging, and so we do need to look at that. I think in looking at that, we also have to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible, as Jeannie mentioned as well. So I know the city's looking at proposed sites and we just need to make sure that we're being very clear in how that's going to look. So I am supportive of it as long as we are really doing our due diligence with the financial piece and the partnerships.
Chris, is the aquatic center something that can be successful in our area and how?
I absolutely think that it's something that can be successful if managed correctly. And I know that the city obviously cannot do it on its own. So again, as Jeannie mentioned, finding those partnerships. I think it just goes back to that quality of life, though, and I think that provides our citizens with that quality of life, just like the pathway and how huge that's been. And the more things that we can do in our community to attract outsiders, to keep our people here are great. But again, it comes down to our citizens. Is that something they want? And I believe that we will see that with that vote if they vote on the half cent. I believe that most people would want that. So again, just comes back to managing it and making sure that we are being fiscally responsible.
Eric, is the aquatic center something that can be successful in our area? And if so, how?
Well, yes, I think it can be successful if it's done right. And I think the voters wanna, should have more media attention to it and know more about it. I mean, I've talked to a couple voters already about it. And they're concerned about how it's gonna be taken care of in the future. They say that, you know, they build this up, but they don't take care of it. So I agree with Jeannie about the funding and stuff like that. Personally, I like to see it because my wife can use the therapy. She needs that. And right now, we just go to the hospital for therapy sessions all the time. But I hope it works. It's gonna be up to the voters to decide, and I hope they have the right information about it.
Thank you. Nathan, is the aquatic center something that can be successful in our area? And if so, how?
I think the definition of successful needs to be, you know, better defined. Is it gonna make money the first year? No. Can it? Possibly. Is it gonna provide services for the students to swim and compete? Absolutely. Is there a therapy component? Yes. I think that it needs to look at the overall plan, which I don't know if there's a hammered out or ironed out, this is exactly what you're going to get. But I need, I would say that we don't want to undercut and do what we can just barely afford. If we're gonna do it, we need to do it right. Have an indoor and outdoor component, both an organized and a fun play area that people want to go to. I've seen things with my own kids where something gets over-organized and it's no longer fun. It's something you have to do. Hurry up, get ready, eat quick, and let's get there. If you've got a place to hang out, kids are gonna want to be there and excel to either, you know, compete or do different safety things. I think we do need to have a component tree where we work with the Y and the schools for lakefront safety. So I think that is a goal or something that can be successful. And work with different organizations for the funding as well. Kind of ran out of time there.
Anyone else with something they'd like to add in regards to the aquatic center?
I guess I didn't run out of time. I thought you were flipping it, so I'll take the last thirty seconds.
Go ahead.
I think we need to use it as an addition to our current aquatic components, not just in Scotts Bluff, but the other communities that have outdoor pools so that we can do things like have mayor challenges and work on different ways that we can work amongst the valley and have friendly rivalries and competitions and whatnot.
Thank you. Kendall, we're to you now. Over the past twelve months, how many city council meetings have you attended? And what are your thoughts on how those meetings went?
Well, most recently, I probably attended four, maybe five. It was one thing when I first moved. I first moved to Scotts Bluff, I attended several during that timeframe. And then, of course, we all know what happened after that. So I was not in attendance, but enjoy going to the council meetings. I think the current council has done a great job, and I want to give kudos to Mayor McCarrigan and Nathan Green. Sorry, Nathan.
Eugene, over the past 12 months, how many city council meetings have you attended? And what were your thoughts on how those meetings went?
I believe I've attended most of those over the last year. And I think I've missed maybe four out of the last year. And I think they went very well as a whole. I think we have a great council in place that's very effective and committed to our city.
Jeannie, over the past 12 months, how many city council meetings have you attended? And what are your thoughts on how those meetings went?
Well, I've attended all of them, happy to say. And of course, I think they go great because I'm leading them. But anyway, just saying, there have been some hard decisions that have to be made. And I think that's one thing when you're running for council, you don't expect to have to do those, you know, and make those hard decisions. But I think when we're in the position to run for that, we have to keep that in the back of our mind. And sometimes it's hard to go because you know what's on the agenda. But I've attended them all, and I've been present. So and I make sure they're short and sweet right now.
Betsy, over the past 12 months, how many city council meetings have you attended? And what were your thoughts on how those meetings went?
I've been attending the last few months, so not a ton of meetings. I think they have went well. It has been very interesting. I have learned a lot. I really enjoy hearing from the staff and learning about what they're presenting to the council. I think the council has done a fine job. And I think you do the best with what you have. And they've definitely been given some tough, tough things this year. So I think they're doing a fine job.
Chris, over the past 12 months, how many city council meetings have you attended? And what were your thoughts on how those meetings went?
So I have not attended any in-person, but I do watch them online from time to time. I, you know, I think they go fine. It has been very interesting. It's kind of sparked my interest in city council and just my desire to learn how it all works. So, you know, I can't comment that it's gone bad, good, or indifferent, because I am not a city council member. From a spectator, I think that the council handles their business. They're run efficiently. And, you know, they seem like they are on point. So, thanks.
Eric, over the past 12 months, how many city council meetings have you attended? And what were your thoughts on those?
Well, I was just at a city council yesterday. I've been to a number of city council meetings throughout the past year. I don't know how many, but I often go on to YouTube and visit the meetings there too as well. I think the most eventful one was the one with the firing of the city manager. And just yesterday, we were talking about salary increases for employees. There's a lot of tough decisions that they have to go through, and they have to, it's not always good times, but they're generally good people in the city council. So our city seems to run pretty good, so I applaud the current city council members. That's about all I have to say about it.
Okay. Nathan, over the past 12 months, how many city council meetings have you attended? And what were your thoughts on how those meetings went?
Been to a few city council meetings. Trying to go back to 12 months, when I first moved to Scotts Bluff, I had some issues with trying to get some different things taken care of for where I live. And it's what kind of got me coming to city council meetings. So I would attend them even before I decided to run. Sat in the back, asked a lot of questions, was one of those citizens against virtually everything as it affected me. And then kind of learned what the role was, what you could do if there were boards that you went to instead of just going directly to city council. I stuck with it and eventually got elected on. This last year was way different than anything I've ever seen. We've replaced city council members. We've had to replace the city manager. We've had to deal with COVID storms. There is no way that I would say that there is a norm. It's just being able to roll with it and working together, especially when we didn't have quorum and it was questionable sometimes. You did what was best for the city. Even if you had questions, you'd ask those questions. But then you had to take a strong, hard look at how it would affect the overall city. And I think there's been some changes in the last few months. But overall, I think we've worked very well through everything that we've gone through.
Matt, over the past 12 months, how many city council meetings have you attended? And what were your thoughts on how those meetings went?
I have not been to any meetings in the past 12 months. I follow real closely all the local news and the changes that are occurring. I think the council's been very resilient. I also have a lot of faith in them that with the city manager situation, you know, they were privy to information. Obviously, we didn't have the whole output with what went on there. But I trust what they did, and they made the right decision based on the facts they were given. And if I get elected to the city council, I'm going to rely on them heavily to learn the process and also just to try and maintain that quality the city council has always had, from Raymond Gonzalez to Randy Meinger to the current staff that we have.
Thank you. Anyone else with anything left to add? Okay, I've got a couple more. We're going to go back to Eugene then. Eugene, if somebody was preparing to move into Scotts Bluff and knew nothing about the city, how would you describe it?
A large, small community of wonderful people that are community-minded, generous, caring, and kind, I guess, would be the, you know, I would say that brings people to this community. It's a reasonably cost place to live. My son just recently moved from California, and the high prices there, he can survive for about a fourth of what he was paying every month where he was. So it's a great community to be here, to have.
Jeannie, if somebody was moving, preparing to move into Scotts Bluff and knew nothing about the city, how would you describe it?
Well, I think it's great. It's definitely a small ag community, but it has some big city things involved in it. We have lots of parks. We have the pathway now, which is a big draw and a great thing. We have a diverse group of people that live here, different cultures. We have some large employers that, you know, they can find good jobs here. It might be an industry trade, or it might be a professional trade. We also have the monument. A lot of people forget about that we have the monument available. And so we have some places for people to go. We're close to the Front Range. We're close to Rapid City. I could just go on and on. But anyway, I think it's a great place to raise a family. It's very community-oriented, and so that would be my take.
Betsy, if someone was preparing to move into Scotts Bluff and knew nothing about the city, how would you describe it?
I would describe Scotts Bluff as a small community that's very close-knit and works well together, partners well together. I think that there is a great opportunity for a good quality of life here. There's lots of opportunities. I think we're very supportive of businesses and people wanting to start new things and be creative and innovative. I know, in being at the meeting last night, there was a lot of talk about the Cinco de Mayo celebration that they're planning downtown in May. And I just think there's a lot of activities and things that we do here that are fun and creative. And I think it would be an exciting place to also come and raise your children and your family, so.
Chris, how would you describe the city to someone who knows nothing about it?
I do this often in my work. I work in Michigan, so people ask me. First thing I say is, you can be door-to-door anywhere in this town within five minutes. That is no lie, unless you get stopped by the train. A lot of cities don't have that. We do have that small-town atmosphere where everybody knows everybody. You can go, I love it. You can be driving down any street, and you see somebody you know. You get this feeling of kinship in this town, like everybody takes care of everyone. It's a Nebraska, a Nebraska thing. Kind-hearted, hard-working folks. The scenery is beautiful. We have, we're by a lake. We are, we have the monument. We have the pathway, parks, recreation. So much to do in this community. And if you want to pop over to Denver, it's going to take you maybe three hours to go see a concert. You know, that's a day trip, right, right close to the big city without having to live that big city life. My favorite thing about this town is the commute. You don't have a big commute regardless where you work, if you're in Scotts Bluff. So our lifestyle is very laid back, and we are easygoing people. And we care about each other. And I love how diverse our community is. Thanks.
Eric, if somebody was preparing to move into Scotts Bluff and knew nothing about the city, how would you describe it?
Well, I would tell them that the population is about 15,000 and hasn't really grown in population in decades, really, since I've been born here. But to me, that's the fun part, that it's not like Denver, and it's not like some big city. People here are really friendly, and there's people here that give welcome. There's a welcome committee here that treats people good, gives them a lot of free coupons and things here. Also, you know, I think having the bluffs and around surrounding areas is very wonderful, beautiful to look at. It's called the landmark country. There's also Lake Minot Eras, not that far away, and you can go fishing and stuff like that. Just built the pedestrian bridge. My buddy, Arby Carlson, helped build that. And, you know, I just had an experience not long ago about my car breaking down at Keemar, and somebody helped. Does a jump start us. And that's kind of the quality of people are in Nebraska.
Nathan, if somebody was preparing to move into Scotts Bluff and knew nothing about the city, how would you describe it?
Well, I've often said a hometown, not a small town. And that's true. People do band together and help out. If you need somebody to pick up your kids, it's not hard to make those friendship groups. Got many areas of groups for whatever activity it might be. If it's history, there's a vast knowledge of history that's taking place around here. Activity levels, we've got trails, parks, sporting events for youth, great schools. You know, we are respectful. Even if we have a disagreement, we can still talk about it and be civil about it. It's not, I'm not going to talk to you again, you know. So it is really nice. We are very supportive of diversity in our community. And no one really, I don't believe feels singled out, or if they do, it's easy to address those issues. The commute was brought up, and I think the worst commute is whether or not you're driving into the sun, or drive, you know, when you go to work, or if you're driving away from it. I don't think there's a real traffic jam or anything like that. No potholes like the big cities have.
Matt, if someone was preparing to move into Scotts Bluff and knew nothing about the city, how would you describe it?
So every summer out at the monument, we get new park rangers that come from all over the country. And so I kind of help with orientation with what's here. And I kind of describe it as the best of both worlds. It's small, so as everyone's mentioned, we have some great things like no traffic issues. I can get anywhere in 15 minutes. It's peaceful. There's a sense of peace. Every time we've gone on vacation, we come back. We have a sense of peace coming back to Scotts Bluff. You know, no dread or anything. I think a lot of the people that have come here from bigger cities, that have worked here from the park service all over the nation, they comment on the same thing. They're impressed what we have here, both with the natural setting that we have with Wildcat Hills, the lake, Fort Robinson. You're just three hours away from the bigger cities if you want to attend those kinds of events. And we have a lot to offer here and a lot of potential with our schools. We've got a good core of teachers to build up, the students that we have. And we have a higher education facilities here to have more growth through WNCC, the university medical center, and through Shadrin. So I think there's a lot of potential here.
Thank you. Kendall, if somebody was preparing to move into Scotts Bluff and knew nothing about the city, how would you describe it?
My list is pretty long, so be prepared. No, I would say location, location, location. We've all heard that before. But just the location is wonderful. We have the monument, which is great for sunrise and sunset. Within three hours, you can be in Denver. If you need the big city, you can go to Deadwood. You can go to Devil's Tower. Just the outdoor availability and things that you can do outdoors, whether it be hunting, fishing. If you're from the coast and you know an ocean, you can always go to Big Mac. My wife calls that her ocean now. And so we go there when she needs a reprieve. But again, it's location, it's limited, limited traffic. A big thing would be the schools. Great school system. And then also, another note, just the hometown community. Everywhere you go, people you talk to, they know each other. And it's just a great, great feeling to be around friends.
Thank you. Anyone with anything else to add? Eric?
I would also tell them how wonderful the Midwest Theater is. I mean, I went there a couple weeks ago and saw the Red Hot Chili Peppers there. And they were fabulous. But what I really noticed is that the people maintaining it and the elderly helping out there are really just wonderful people.
Thank you. All right. Jeannie, last question. What are your thoughts on the city creative district that's in the development phase? And what do you think about that?
I think it's great. I actually attended a lot of, well, one of the meetings. And I think it gives us, our artists and our young people, an opportunity to be creative within our city. I was really surprised at how many people were attending and were excited about it. It's going to extend down to our east section, which is great. They have done a lot with the facade improvements over the last couple years that have been offered by the city. And those businesses down there have made some great strides in improving their exterior and interior. However, it seems to be a little cumbersome to get down there. And I think this is going to be an improvement and a way to draw more people down to that area. When I grew up, I remember being down there. We had like Alexander's, we had Henry's Market, we had all these great businesses down there. And I think just drawing the attention back down to there and adding some art into it is going to be a great addition if the funding comes about, so.
Betsy, what are your thoughts on the city creative district that's currently in the development phase?
I think this is a very cool opportunity for the community. I actually also serve on the West Nebraska Arts Center Board. And so I've learned a little bit about this project from the staff there. They're very involved in it. And looking at the map as well, it just is, I just love how it encompasses a big portion of the city and crosses just different neighborhoods and communities. So I think it's a great opportunity. And from my understanding, it also brings the potential for funding for it also brings the potential for funding for, for some of those businesses and areas to, to just do more creative things. So I think it's great.
Chris, what are your thoughts on the City Creative District currently in the development phase?
I'm, I'm not very well versed on it, but it, it is, it does sound exciting. I'm all for that artistic flair and, and bringing that to our community and improving the look of, of our communities. So I think it's great.
Eric, what are your thoughts on the City Creative District in the development phase?
I think it's great. I don't have much to add to it, but I think it brings a lot to Scotts Bluff.
Nathan, what are your thoughts on the City Creative District currently in the development phase?
Well, I think it's going to add to the personality of the community. I think that it's going to open up a little bit more diversity to the heart of the city, not just putting it into one area, not limiting it or kind of sectioning off an area where you can do this or that. It kind of brings the community together and I don't want to use the word unites the communities in the different areas of the town, but I think it will bring a feeling of wellbeing throughout the community.
Thank you. Matt, what are your thoughts on the City Creative District currently in the development phase?
This is a program I actually would need more input and guidance on. It's something I don't have a lot of knowledge on. From the sounds of it, just improving the overall look of businesses in the area, I would think that would be a great thing to continue. I think we've made a lot of headway in the downtown area of Scotts Bluff, but advancing that to other areas of Scotts Bluff would be a, a great idea to promote small business.
Kendall, what are your thoughts on the City Creative District that's currently in the development phase?
I too am not well versed on, on, on the project itself. I would say just based on what I've heard tonight, the, the attraction of artists and, and their talents and, and the, the availability for the community to, to see their, their, their talents and whatnot would be a great attraction for the city.
And Eugene, what are your thoughts on the City Creative District currently in the development phase?
I'm one of three, I guess, in a row that have limited knowledge of the, of the project. But again, as they said, I think it's a thing that could really enhance our city and, and create opportunities for lots of tourists and, and other businesses here in the area.
Anyone else want to add anything on the City Creative District? All right, that's time. We've reached time for closing arguments, or closing thoughts, I guess, arguments, whatever you want to call them. A closing statement, how about that, to give those that are watching tonight and the voters a, a last word on you. And Betsy, you were up next, so we will start with you.
Okay, so in closing, I would love to have your vote to serve on the city council. I'm committed to having an equitable, safe, and thriving community. Being from Scotts Bluff, I've appreciated our, our small town feel and that helps us look after each other and our friends and our families. Growing up here, I've had many great opportunities for a successful life and career and I think it's important that everyone should be able to have that. We should continue to innovate and be creative for retaining our young people and, and for the elderly in our community as well. Western Nebraska in Scotts Bluff is an amazing little city and I, I think that it's not just a spot on the map, you know, for tourism, but for so many of us, it's, it's our home. And when people come home to visit, they should be happy to be here and then sad to leave. So in closing, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and I look forward to your vote in May.
Thank you. Chris?
I've been asked recently what my why is. You always have to have a why for what, what you're doing. And if you don't have a why, then why are you doing it, right? So here, my why really is to serve the public's interest. I, I wholeheartedly believe in giving back. I have that compassion, passion for our community. I am not driven by an agenda, a personal agenda or otherwise. I'm not obviously power hungry. I, I, I don't need that for, for my life. And I, I don't, I don't feel I need to cater to any special interests. I, I just really am committed to this, this city of ours and, and want to see it grow and prosper in all ways. You know, and some of the characteristics to me that make a good city council member are, are the characteristics that I, that I have. And, and it starts with integrity and I live my life to, with integrity and honesty. I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, 60 seconds for a closing statement.
Well, I had fun tonight. There's some issue though I would like to see the council take on. It'd be a big issue. It'd be like the, I'd like to see an anti-prize gouging bill sponsored. Too many of our elderly and others due to accidents are born a debt during outrageous medical billing practices. Some lose their businesses and farms and homes due to extreme medical bills. This shouldn't happen. I myself am a victim of medical bill gouging. Would like to see something worked out with the regional west and the city to have some kind of agreement on this matter. There are a lot of matters in the city council that can take on that affect the citizens to include crime, education, infrastructure, rail crossings, and so on. We need leaders and I would like to be one of those five on the city council. All in all, Scotts Bluff is a great city, great people, some of the nicest people you'll ever meet. I would appreciate your vote and please visit voteferguson.com.
Thank you. Nathan, 60 seconds for a closing statement.
I've been honored to be on the city council the last four years. Look forward to another four years. I think that one term is difficult to achieve the goals that you set out and would feel that there's a lot left on the table. I know that there for a while, there was three of us and we took a lot of the brunt of the problems that were going on. I got broad shoulders. I can take that. It was something that I put myself out there to do and chose to do. I look forward to it and I want to see this continue on, a lot of the things that the staff has started and different wards and organizations have brought forward. I'd like to see those come to completion and be part of it with them. Not taking credit for their accolades or anything, but giving them the ability to continue on. I do look forward to sitting on the council with some of the people that are up here right now. Actually, there's nobody I wouldn't be willing to work with. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, 60 seconds for a closing statement.
I think after all these years of teaching government in the classroom, for me at least, it's exciting actually to experience the whole process. And I really value the community and have always tried to give back and I'd like to get back or get on the council and help the city in any way possible through the city council and I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Kendall, 60 seconds for a closing statement.
Again, I encourage all to vote. Voter turnout will be huge. So again, I encourage all to vote. I have no personal agenda. I, I manage currently in my position with an open door policy where when elected, I would, I would continue that with the residents of, of Scotts Bluff. Some of you may have already heard this, but for me, it's, you know, the questions are, is it the truth? Is it fair? And is it beneficial to all?
Thank you. Eugene, 60 seconds for a closing statement.
I believe that, I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to be here tonight. Also would appreciate your vote. But I believe my history shows that I'm a caring and committed person to this community and would love to continue that commitment and caring as a member of the council.
Thank you. Jeannie, we'll end with you. 60 seconds for a closing statement.
I'd just like to thank you for inviting me here tonight. I'd also like to thank the voters for putting their confidence in me for the past four years. I too have had the question, why? Why are you doing this again? Why would you put yourself out there for another four years? But I just really enjoy giving back to the community. I've learned a lot and I think it's an important role and I just enjoy it. And so I'm hoping that they'll feel the same and put that confidence back in me and give me their vote again this year. But as I say, it will be what it's supposed to be, so thank you.
Thank you. We would like to thank all of our candidates running for Scotts Bluff City Council for participating in tonight's forum. We hope that this helps you in deciding who you wish to vote for. As a reminder, in the May 10th primary election, you'll be allowed to vote for up to three candidates. The top six vote getters in the primary election will advance to the November general election. So for five or six of you, we'll get to do this again coming up for the general election. This candidate's forum is one of several being presented by the Government Affairs Committee of the Scotts Bluff Gearing United Chamber of Commerce. We again would like to thank the Rural Radio Scotts Bluff staff for recording this forum so you can view it, the timers for volunteering, the chamber staff, and for Scotts Bluff Public Schools for hosting us for this forum tonight. On behalf of the Scotts Bluff Gearing United Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee and for my co-chair, Don Wolf, I'm Bill Boyer. Thank you for joining us. And remember, get out and vote. Good night.